And you were at a Wassa Water Works special meeting of the commission. Thanks for joining us. I will note that everyone on the, we are missing Jim Force. All right, we, everyone who can be here is here. We are down one member. So the first item on our agenda is discussion and possible action on funding strategies for managing PFAS in Wassa's drinking water. We do have some folks joining us from our financial planner. I don't know if we have anything we'd like to share before we hand the mic over to them?
I don't think so. I think the presentation is also in the packet, should be online as well, that they're going to present, so.
All right, Ellers, I think we are ready for you.
Sounds good. Can you all hear me?
Yes, very excited to tell you we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to try to share my screen. I know there's, I believe it's on screen for you guys as well.
Yep, we got it.
So that helps guide as we move along. But, so we've been identified of your upcoming PFAS plans, and so we've kind of identified a potential funding strategy for this. So I'm going to walk through some of these items and just refresh. Some of this might be a refresh, so just understand, we're just setting the table here. So for the project, we have the engineers have an estimated cost from a prior meeting with the city of about 12 to 16 million. The timeline for spending those funds would start this July, so that's July 2022, with then construction starting in early spring of 2023 and going through early 2024. So the importance of understanding that, of course, is just for cash flow purposes and understanding when, when funds may be needed. So we'll get to that in a bullet point or two here. The estimated earliest closing for the Safe Drinking Water Fund Loan Program would be late 2023, based on kind of that program timeline, the applications that are needed, et cetera. The reason that this program would be the most attractive to the city would be that it, it would provide grant funding that's specific to the project that you're completing. Basically, the DNR is, is getting a bunch of funds through the EPA for the next five years related to PFAS. So basically, the city should have additional funds available through grant funding if they were to use the Safe Drinking Water Fund Loan Program. So that said, for whatever reason, if these don't become available, or we need to pivot, understand, you know, you'd still have the, you'd still have the capabilities to do so as well, but we're going to move forward, understanding that this is the program that we'll be using, and we'll kind of go as we get information. That said, in discussions with city staff, they've estimated that interim financing would be needed by October. So as you can see, you're going to start spending money presumably here in July of '22. We can't close on the long-term loan until late 2023. You know, we have a gap here in terms of dollars being spent and the funds available. So city staff had basically said, we may be able to cash fund for the time being a portion of these planning and design costs, but certainly by October would be the, the appropriate time to at least have something in place for interim financing. So we're going to kind of go through those interim financing steps, and then at the end of this, kind of talk about going through this project through completion. So right now, just kind of assuming total project costs on the higher end of that 16 million, and I've advanced the slide, I don't know if anybody needs to there, but the 16 million of total costs, the city is looking to be about qualified for congressionally-directed spending of about 5 million. Right now, it's unknown as to when those funds would be available, but this is at Senator Tammy Baldwin's office. They are making this request on behalf of the city. So we're presuming those funds will be available, and it's about 5 million. So you can take, you know, hoping to get that, let's take 5 million away from that. And then the engineer has discussed the availability for the Safe Drinking Water Fund Loan Programs, emerging contaminants grants that I discussed on the previous slide, and the engineer is estimating about 5 million may be available, and that's, that's communicate, recent communications with the DNR there. Understand, this is kind of a moving target. The DNR is still getting information from the EPA in terms of how much will be available. There's, of course, other communities that are looking for this as well. So right now, the, the DNR is just kind of indicated, it's about, you know, expect about half that could be available. So that half is actually the 16 million less the 5 million. So the DNR won't give you, you know, the full amount if you have other sources of funding. So understand, you have to take that 5 million from the congressionally-directed spending off first, and then they give you that half of that. So you don't receive that, though, until you close on the loan. So again, like we stated on the last slide, this would be later in 2023, right now, based on kind of our estimates. And then that also leaves a remaining of 6 million of funding needed. So understand, rough number still, but let's just keep running with the 6 million. While you could say, well, we could do interim financing for just that 6 million, it is probably safer to, with the unknown and delayed timing of the grant funding, that the interim financing be for a higher or near-full amount. So ultimately, we did get a, kind of a cash flow estimate spend-down for this project, and so we could, as we know, the applications are filed here moving into summer for the Safe Drinking Water Fund Loan Program, and the ability to some of these funds being available, we could certainly hone in on the dollar amount, but just understand that, you know, we may go higher than the 6 million, and we just wanted to kind of preempt that conversation as to why, you know. If you're not knowing when you're going to get these funds, you may want to actually have the, the availability to the higher interim financing amounts if needed. Going to the next slide, for the same reasons of borrowing on an interim amount higher than what actually may be needed, would ultimately be our recommendation to look for interim financing that contains a draw feature. And then, in turn, you could, you know, end up saving interest expense if you're able to obtain interim financing with a draw feature. So there are underwriters out there that do this, so we certainly have experience working with them to get, you know, interim financing on a draw basis for projects like this. So this wouldn't be anything unique, we're just kind of making sure you're understanding of what we're looking to do moving forward. You certainly would have the option to not have a draw feature and borrow the full amount, just understand you'd be having to pay that off, you know, whatever that amount was at the point at which you're looking to close on your long-term funding. Then the second recommendation would be having all of that interest due at maturity. So it would be structuring this, so, you know, probably giving a little buffer for time into, you know, early 2024 in terms of a maturity date on this interim financing, just in case the program takes longer to close. But that said, having all that interest due at maturity actually makes those interest costs program-eligible. Any interim interest that you have to pay, the Safe Drinking Water Fund Loan Program won't make that eligible unless it's at loan closing. So we generally make, in deals looking similar to this, we make that interest due at maturity, meaning, you know, let's say this is callable 1/1 of 2024. At that point, that we're closing that Safe Drinking Water Fund Loan, we would be paying all of the interest. We wouldn't have any interim interest payments, so that we could pay that off with the DNR Loan Program. Of course, you could pay that off with cash as well, so you're reducing your long-term takeout, it just gives you that financial flexibility. Then moving to the next slide, we just wanted to walk through some of the next steps and just kind of identify the targets that we're looking at. And so this first bullet point here is just basically to say, we're still gathering information. So we're going to still, you know, be getting information from the DNR as to the eligibility, as to how much funds are available, the congressional grant funding, how much of those funds are available, et cetera. We're going to be gathering this all the way through late summer, and even all the way through into early fall of 2023. You know, there's, there's going to be kind of moving parts as we go along here, and we just wanted to point that out. But ultimately, what we'd be looking for to meet the October date for interim financing is an August meeting, in which we would present the rate impact, and then also decide on our interim financing amount and, and vehicle. So we plan to kind of present options and move forward, setting the sale for the interim financing. This rate impact would look similar to what was done for the treatment plant. If you were a part of those discussions, you may remember, we did a 10-year long-range cash flow analysis, that the model kind of mimics what the PSC calculations are for rate adjustments, and we basically are saying, all right, these are the projects beyond just PFAS, you know, main replacements, everything, et cetera, of what the city and water utility is looking to accomplish, and we'd be looking at, how are those rates impacted throughout that 10-year process? But most importantly, what's the impact of this as well? And then in September, we'd be, you know, officially setting that sale for the interim financing in October, moving into the sale results and getting the funds available two weeks after. And then ultimately, beyond that, fall 2022 through spring of 2023, you'd be looking at the water rate case, and, and the reason being there is you want those rates implemented before that Safe Drinking Water Fund Loan closes, so that you can prove you can make coverage. You don't want, you know, these hitting the general obligation debt capacity, so you'd be issuing this on what's called a revenue pledge, similar to what you did for the treatment plant project a few years back. And ultimately, then you have to prove that your rates are set up to be able to make these debt service payments. Even if you were issuing on a GO basis, of course, you wouldn't want to be levying for these, as all of your taxpayers may not be water rate payers. So the same principle would apply, I just want to point out that we're looking to issue the long-term financing on a revenue basis for these reasons. We would need those rates implemented before late 2023. So similar to the last rate case for the treatment plant, we'd be looking to complete that before our long-term takeout. So with that, I can take any questions, or my colleagues that are with me as well can take any questions that you may have of kind of this process so far.
Okay, thank you. I guess I'll open up to commission members, if you have any questions. Mr. Jean.
I know, I know you mentioned that the interest rate is, is not determined, but do you have an idea of what we could expect on the interim portion? And then, I think, I know the answer to the, this last one, but the, the final, the carrying of the debt for, what did we, how did we have it set up, 20 years or 10 years? To how, is, that was just through the Safe Drinking Water Loan Program, right? And what the projected interest rate might be with that?
Sure, I can tackle that. So, good questions. The interim financing is more of a movable target. Obviously, there's a little bit of a story to tell in terms of, you know, the, the type of financing and the features that we would like. Ultimately, you know, you want to be making sure you're setting your objectives to these, you know, if you, if you want the draw feature, that may come with a little bit of a higher interest rate, et cetera. But, you know, we would anticipate, right now, the revenue bond buyer index this week is at about 3.5%, and that's on a 20-year basis. So given we got a few months to go here as well, and there's probably going to be continued interest rate climbs, that something in the range of 3.5%, 4%, I mean, very preemptive, presumptive at this point. But if, you know, you're looking for that, it's about a year and a half maturity there, you know, that, that would be ultimately my first expectation in terms of a general idea of what that interim financing would be. And then the Safe Drinking Water Fund Loan rate is ultimately, they set quarterly rates, and then all projects that are eligible are at 55% of that market rate that they sent, or that they set, excuse me. So it would be subject, you know, of course, to whatever the rate is late 2023, let's, let's call that quarter four, that they would set in October. And so you'd be subject to whatever their market rate is now, and so there are two different, you can get 20-year rate, and you can amortize that less than 20 years, but they don't give you a, you know, a smaller rate for that, even if you're amortizing less. You can get a 20-year rate or a 30-year rate, and you can amortize those as you choose. But that said, if you're going 30 years, just understand that comes with a, right now, it's about 20 basis points or 0.2 higher than the 20-year rate, but you would have that option based on kind of the, the projected life of these assets. Now, in discussions with the engineers, more or less, I, I think we're falling on a 20-year life cycle for the assets, only because it's a lot of treatment, you know, items that we're discussing here. So more than likely, you're looking at the 20-year rate and 55% of that. So what that'll be late 2023 will probably change quite a bit from right now, but that said, I believe we're at about 3% for the market rate, so you're at about half of that, or 1.5. So if the interest rates continue to climb over the next year and a half till that closes, you know, it'd be 55% of whatever the market rate is at that time.
Follow-up.
Is there any competing interests that we know of with the Safe Drinking Water Fund in the state? I think when we did the initial projects, we were kind of worried about Waukesha or whatever they were doing. So is there anything similar to that that we may need to be concerned about?
Sure, I, I did speak with Susan today, one of the engineers from Donahue, and, you know, ultimately, there are other communities looking at the PFAS, you know, their own PFAS projects. So you, you would have similar competition there as you did previously. That said, you know, these are going to be the priority projects in terms of just total eligibility for the Safe Drinking Water Fund Loan Program. PFAS are on the top of everyone's mind, included the DNR. So I would say, to that end, I would, I would imagine you would score well there, but the engineers would probably be better able to speak to.
Yep, we'll invite you. Yeah, feel free, you can join us at the mic. Thank you.
Susan Waikewitz with Donahue and Associates. Yeah, to follow up on, on Brian's response, so there are a number of communities that are, would be competing for the emerging contaminants fund. There's $12.8 million available over the next five years for the emerging contaminants, but then with the regular Safe Drinking Water Loan Program, there's a large influx of money, really historic amount of money that's going to go into the program, so I, I don't expect Safe Drinking Water to run out of money. And in fact, DNR is working very hard to try to figure out how to spend the money in state fiscal year 2023. What they're anticipating doing in this is just, as of Friday, a conversation with their staff. The communities that they expect to submit PFAS projects are, they're going to be sending a survey out to those communities as far as readiness, and they're well aware that Wassa is on that list. I would expect perhaps like Madison, La Crosse, I don't know if Marinette and Rhine Land are, you know, are going to be seeking funding, but DNR really wants to work with the communities and try to figure out, one, how to spend the money that they've got coming from EPA, and then maximize the amount of funds available for the communities.
I see a question brewing. Commissioner Robinson.
Yes, I, my concern is, I'm not sure of the relevance of this discussion, absent the discussion of the policy in light of what happened last week with the EPA's recommended new health advisory limit, and I think that will do a lot to drive timing, other things, at least from my perspective. But I, you know, I, I think what, what I was hoping for in, in looking at the analysis was, you know, we had the number last month, or last meeting of 16.5 million for GAC high towers. We're now at 16 million. You take the congressional delegate, congressionally-designated funding, you're down to 11.5, and then if you are successful in getting the emerging contaminants at 6.5, it'd be interesting to see what each of those levels would do for our rates. I was hoping to have that type of a discussion in addition to, you know, what the operating expenses would be above and beyond, beyond that. I think that's, those are the types of discussions that we, we need to make, and I think if the, the new proposed standards are implemented across the state, there will be a significant amount of demand. Everybody will be running to get those dollars for treatment at a local level. If you move from the 70 how, the health advisory limit that EPA adopted in 2016, or the DHS recommended standard from this year of '20, down to 0.02 or 0.004, there's going to be a lot more interest in seeking those dollars for treatment. So I, I think we need to sort of start, start the discussion with, what is our policy as a utility? How does that drive our response? What's our timeframe and timing on that? And then we can get into our approach to financing of it. I'm, I'm a little bit concerned that we're, right now, a little bit backward.
I'm just going to take a peek at the city attorney. Is, are we cool to hop, skip, and jump on our agenda and maybe come back to a policy discussion of this? Or is that? Okay, all right, we have a confirmation on this. I do know that when we turn on, turn the key on our new drinking water facility, we will right away be down to 15 parts per trillion, and that's the, the goal in, when we turn it on at the end of summer, because that was our goal as a policy body when we first found out about PFAS. I don't know the funding as it relates to how quickly we can get down below to those EPA health advisory numbers, but maybe with that, we can talk about items number two and three, but let, maybe let's start with item number two, with the revised U.S. EPA health advisory levels for PFAS and drinking water, and then we'll pop back to this if that sounds good. Okay. Who wants to kick us off with the revised numbers here? They're very low.
Yeah, I had sent some information out. These EPA revised their health advisories, these are interim health advisories for PFOA and PFOS. They're still under review with their science board. They are subject to change again, but, but essentially, PFOA is, is really below detectable levels at, at this point, at four parts per quadrillion, or 0.004 parts per trillion. Basically, what that means is we cannot test that low to determine what that is. PFOS is at 0.02 parts per trillion as well. Our detectable limit levels are about two parts per trillion, so both of these are below detectable levels from the labs that we use throughout the nation. So these, again, these are subject to, to change and for review. EPA has stated and continues to state that they are on track to release a recommended standard before year-end nationally, which would be a maximum, maximum contaminant level, an MCL. So we, and there are instances with Safe Drinking Water where health advisory levels are established well below what the standards end up being, and so that may be the situation here, that health advisory levels are established at very low levels, when the standards come out, that they are at higher levels. And through discussions that they've had last week, the reason for that is, is to ensure that when contaminants are detected, that the communities and people are, you know, drinking water advisories then are able to be established and notify residents and municipal systems. So that would be one reason why advisory levels are set so low. The other one is that I think that, that there is still a lot of information that they're researching on human health impacts over time, and definitely over a lifetime. So they don't have all the information, and it's evolving as they get studies and review studies. And so as that information comes forward, we'll continue to update the governing body and municipality and the residents as we know more information.
Before I ask anyone else for any questions on this, with our phased approach to the drinking water facility, would we get to this kind of non-detect level for these two contaminants with our plan as-is?
Yeah, I know Andrew's not here, but at, at the meeting that we had and the presentation that they gave with the large GAC vessels, the idea would be, we'd, we would have a full, complete lead-leg system. And so with each one of those legs running, that we would get to non-detect levels. So we could take one of those legs out of service while the other one operated, we could change out the media, and we would still be to non-detect levels. Reading EPA's information, they felt granular activated carbon as well, design can reach these low levels. They didn't give specifics on, on how they made that determination, but they have put that in writing, so, at these four parts per quadrillion, so.
Mr. Robinson.
So Eric, could you give us a, a timeline of, you know, where, we, we've got the treatability study now, and I think that in light of the, the federal number and driving that down, you know, what, what value can we, what other value is there in continuing the treatability study? Or if, can we stop the treatability study now and just move to a GAC system? From a policy perspective, I know that you had some concerns about what it removed in addition to some, you know, some of the organics and the ability to maintain our system. So where are we at risk, or what other factors do we need to consider as a utility?
I think, you know, with the pilot study, some of the things that we're curious about is obviously the interim solution, right? We're going to get below 20 parts per trillion, that's what the pilot study has shown with the design of the facility as-is. We just don't know how long that media that we're using is going to last. Right now, I think we're up to six months. Correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, we can anticipate. The longer we run that pilot study, obviously, the longer we will, you know, we'll understand how long before we have to change that media out.
But, but would that, the, the media change out, does that impact our design or our operational cost?
Oh, definitely our operational cost.
So it's more of a, if we're going to do it, we're, we're going to do it. It's just, will it be a higher cost, so?
Right, and how many times would we have to do it before, if, you know, you know, the new treatment type went online? So like, if we found out it was only last below 20, if that's the goal for six months, then once the new plant goes online, then within six months, we would have to replace the media another six months, until the new treatment went online. That's, you know, so we don't know right now how many treatment change-outs or media change-outs we're going to have with.
So when you, just a series of questions.
Yeah, yep.
So on the interim solution, how will that differ in the, different, differ from the 12-large vessel, 12-foot-large vessels that we're looking at the lead lag on a permanent basis? So what would we be looking at in interim?
Andrew, I, I see you're on. I know that when you have been looking at the pilot, obviously, when we've been testing the anionic exchange that we're putting in the new facility now, you know, we would start out by very low levels of PFAS, they would kind of ramp up, we would do a backwash of those, and then those would come down again. So it's not a consistent, you know, removal, but we've shown that it has been consistent below 20, so somewhere around 12 to 15 on average.
So you're looking at the interim solution that is in anionic exchange, or resin, until we get the GAC system up?
Right.
So if we, can we accelerate the GAC system?
Yeah, we've looked at that, John. I think that the challenge is, is the type of funding that we're using. I don't think that we, I think we, no matter how we look at it, it's 18 to 24 months.
Based on funding or?
Criteria. Based on funding criteria. So bidding projects, this will not be classified, as far as I know, as an emergency project. So bidding projects, this will not be classified, as far as I know, as an emergency project, so we can't bypass bidding. We can't bypass all of the criteria that we need to do in order to accept federal funding.
And those loans are forgivable, at least partially?
Yeah, so the funding that is coming through that, you know, people are expecting grants are actually forgivable loans, and all of that funding is coming through the DNR program, the Safe Drinking Water Loan Program.
So they've got the plan of action or plan for this year, and they're still waiting for the plan for next year for comments, and we don't know what that will look like. Are we applying for this year's funding, next year's funding for the?
Susan might have a better answer for you on that, John, and how, what years we apply for and when.
So the Safe Drinking Water Loan Program operates with the state fiscal year. Currently, they're accepting, through June 30th, they're accepting applications for state fiscal year 2023. And that's where they're trying to figure out, but the problem is that they have not issued guidance on state fiscal 2023 emerging contaminants. So that's the year they're looking to reach out to the communities, and that's the conversation I've had with Matt Markham and Noah at the Safe Drinking Water Loan Program Environmental Improvement Fund. That's where they're planning to reach out to the communities that they expect to have a PFAS issue and try to figure out, one, how to use those funds in state fiscal 2023, and then how to also get the project in state fiscal year 2024. So there's a possibility that you could fund a project. I mean, given where we're at, this project is probably one of the furthest along. And so it's possible that there might even be a strategy where part of the project is funded in state fiscal year 2023, and part of it would be funded in state fiscal year 2024. So like I said, DNR is really trying to work to maximize those funds. The problem as far as timing is, yeah, we have to design it. It has to get approved. It has to be bid and then contracted. And then there's also procurement, and there's construction of vessels. All those things take some time.
So we can't do that in 10 days, is what you're saying?
No.
Mr. Robinson?
That's a traditional approach, and I think in light of the fact that we've got all of our wells, are there opportunities for us to push that, push the limits, if you will? And I've sat through some of those, as a member of the DNR's PFAS External Advisory Committee, some of those discussions. And I'm not sure that you're going to be eligible for funding in two different funding cycles. You know, they wouldn't commit to that, and you certainly can't carry over from one to the other based upon some of the preliminary discussions. So I, you know, we're moving into uncharted territory as we go out there, but there's also the desire to try to provide safe drinking water to our residents. And how do we manage a system where we don't know what that plan is? We don't know where DNR is, and we've got an obligation to the community.
Yeah, I think it is a challenge, John, and you bring up a lot of good points, because we are in a situation where we need to start providing decisions, but we don't have all of the information to go by, and really what we're trying to reach in our goals. And so, and in light of the fact that some of these things are probably going to continually to evolve and change over the next six to eight months, you know, how do we want to do this and how do we approach this? And I, you know, if you were to ask staff right now with the information that we have, the new health advisory levels that have come out, and what we know about GAC, the size of the facility, that we have engineer estimates and everything on, our recommendation would be to move ahead with GAC on the large vessels, because it provides us non-detectable levels on a redundant basis. But it's also the most expensive. You know, one of the things on the congressional project spending at Baldwin's office, we talked about $5 million. I'll give you a little history on that. Talking to Mayor and Mary Ann when we were looking at applying for that, we applied for $20 million. They came back to us after review and asked us that the request has to be between $500,000 and $5 million. So we revised our request to $5 million. Last week, they came back and said, would you take anything less than $5 million, and how much less would you take? And, you know, our response is, well, absolutely, we would take anything that you're willing to provide at this point, but we're looking, at the time was almost a $20 million project, and so we will take whatever congressional spending that you could obligate to Wassa to address this situation that we have.
And I'll also say we won't know likely what we're getting until those bills are signed. This year, they were signed in March for this year, right now we're in. Follow-up question?
Just a comment. And Eric, I agree. I think what the granular activated carbon system does is it gives us protection from the flavor of the month, which is a discussion we had at the last meeting. And we will have other emerging contaminants that will come in. And the problem with some of the anac resins is that they're much more limited in scope into what they can and can't remove. And granular activated carbon has proven itself over the years to be able to deal with multiple contaminants a concern. And if we do the flavor of the month, we're going to be back in dealing with some other contaminant, whether it's pharmaceutical or something else in the future. So I think that it's in everyone's interest to move ahead with the GAC, the granular activated carbon, and try to accelerate that as soon as we can, understanding that there are potential funding sources, but there's uncertainty with the plans. And I understand where Susan's coming from, because they don't have a plan to respond to. And DNR has been trying to work through EPA's and other requirements coming from the feds, and it's not been as quick as possible. But I, you know, perhaps today, if we could move, advance the concept of, or advance the policy of instituting a granular activated carbon system as soon as possible, and direct staff to move ahead and to authorize the other parties to begin to work on the appropriate funding mechanism to implement that, understanding that the nuances of whether we get a loan, a grant, emerging contaminant funds from the state, congressional delegated or designated appropriations, those will all come in, but it's something that we're going to have to do.
So I feel like we're ready to move on to item number three, discussion impossible action on a local policy for setting a goal for PFAS removal. That feels like where we're at. And it sounded to me like you were even more specific as it relates to a goal, but also maybe a method. I don't know if you're entering a motion, or if you'd like to talk a little bit more about that.
Well, just by way of background, I agree with Eric, that the problem of the standard being set at 0.02 parts per trillion or 0.004 parts per trillion is the ability to test for it. And you've got levels of detection versus levels of quantification in labs, and the labs aren't set up necessarily to grab at that level. So I think what we can do is what we can do within the realm of the possible. And toward that, I think that the best system for the city, short, long term, is the granular activated carbon system. So I would move, and it's hard for us, because Eric's right, the numbers are being reviewed. They could change. The trend on numbers nationwide in states that have studied it and developed their own standards has been decreasing over time. And, you know, we can either be chasing the numbers, or we can try to get ahead of the numbers. And I think it makes sense to try to get ahead of those numbers if they change and deal with those other contaminants. So I would move that the Wassa Water Works Commission adopt a policy that would implement a granular activated carbon filtration system at the earliest possible timeline, and develop a financial plan based upon potential funding sources.
Can we add in there, John, this is just as far as the, with the idea that interim would be-
With interim financing, yes.
All right.
Okay, I'm just writing this down so I can, okay. All right, so we have a motion from Commissioner Robinson that we, as a commission, adopt a policy that implements granular activated carbon at our earliest possible timeline, and develop a financial plan that includes interim financing to get us to that. I have a second by Commissioner Herbst. More discussion? Yes, Mr. Jean.
So does that motion take into account item one and three? I understand it, it does sound like it.
Yeah, it feels like we're doing a holistic kind of a motion here.
I just have one other point.
I haven't been interrupted by our parliamentarian yet, so I think we're okay still.
Is that okay?
Yeah. Mr. Jean.
There might be another approach of looking for new wells, locations. And I gave that a lot of thought, but there was nothing ever done formally. I'll talk to our staff about that, of what I thought might be an option. And obviously, that's not part of this. This is maybe another way to get ahead of this problem. Okay.
Sounds good. Any other discussion here? And so when I'm voting on this, I'm considering that GAC seems to be our best solution to get us to that non-detect level as quickly as possible. I don't know if anybody else has anything they want to add here. Mr. Jean.
Is this, I didn't quite, with the Safe Drinking Water Revolving Fund, is this intent to apply that we have to have by June 30th, or is it?
I don't think we can get it all done in 10 days.
The intent to apply would be due by October 31st. If there's an ability to get into the state fiscal year 2023 program, we'd be working with DNR to get a variance on the intent to apply that would have been due last October 31st. But they haven't set an application deadline for the emerging contaminants program for state fiscal year 2023. So that's where they're going to survey the communities that they think might want to tap into those funds, and then try to distribute those funds amongst the communities, and then figure out, you know, where funding each project kind of fits best.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions before we vote? Because I feel like our meeting will end pretty quickly once we do vote, because we're on item three. But I want to make sure we've all talked about everything we need to talk about here. As I really- Yeah, so I'm going to maybe flip it over to Eric, but just a reminder to everyone, including the public, that this is a phased approach. Maybe you can give us just a quick brief of this.
So, you know, we started down this path. Remember that the city council and this commission set a goal for us, and our mission was to reduce PFAS below 20 parts per trillion as soon as possible. We looked at doing that with the pilot study, as well as some, just some other research. And we are able to do that. And so that will be the initial phased approach of this. It will be an interim solution. And as we talked earlier, when the new plant does go online, it will reduce PFAS from what we have by about half. So it will be around 12 to 15 parts per trillion on an average basis. And we will not get down to the new non-detect levels until the new treatment with the GAC is online. I just want to set the expectations for the public. But it is good news that we are able to do that in a shorter term, to reduce those levels to as low as possibly we can right now with the technology we have in place. And again, that 18 to 24 months right now for the new treatment system is what we're anticipating right now, working with our engineers and the regulatory authorities. And otherwise, we will try to crash that schedule or reduce that schedule as much as possible for the public. And we will keep the commission very well informed of how that's going through design, as well as the loan programs and the regulatory authorities. So that's, thank you.
Yeah. Any further comments here? Otherwise, we're ready to vote on our action item. Just a reminder, that is to adopt a policy that, this would be the policy, that implements granular activated carbon at our earliest possible timeline and developing that financial plan that includes the interim financing plan. All of those in favor can signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. That passes unanimously with that. The next item on our agenda is to adjourn. I'll remind you that our next meeting has been rescheduled from the week of the Fourth of July to July 12, 2022, at 1:30 p.m. I would entertain a motion to adjourn, a motion by Herbst and a second by Jean. All those in favor can signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you, everyone.